I'd like to call the second session of the Adams County Cultural Council to order. Zoe, would you call the role, please?
When I say your name, please say here. Joyce Downing.
Here.
Erin Vega.
Here.
Erica Hernandez. Emily Burr.
Here.
Jim Toll.
Here.
Larry Dunn. Larry, I see you and we were just chatting, so I know you're here, so let the record show that Larry is here. Susan Beta. Carrie Lang.
Here.
Okay, that concludes roll.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is a study session statements. Dana, I'll have you start.
Are you muted Dana?
My apologies, Madam Chair. Before we dive into business, I would like to thank the cultural council members for their time and commitment to the SCFD, the county, the arts, science and culture community. I would also like to thank any organizations or members of the public who are joining us today for their time and dedication. It is important to remember that as an official council of the county doing SCFD business, these meetings are public and anything we say today reflects on the council, the county and SCFD. As we move into discussions, I ask that we contemplate the three core guidelines that SCFD believes are imperative in conducting a welcoming, productive and professional meeting. Be respectful of people, of organizations, of opinions and of time. Be positive, assume best intentions of each other and of grantees. Be present, own your experiences, participate and engage. While this is a reminder to the council, it also states our values and expectations of this meetings for any visitors that are with us today. Thank you.
Thank you Dana. Now I will read the statement for the process confirmation. All council members should have their own flux portal up to follow along. We will not be screen sharing. Discussion will take place for each organization in category applied for and will be guided by the SCFD 2004 rubrics. Please be courteous on the virtual platform. This is an open discussion, but we'll call on any hands raised by council. Council members, please keep your cameras on throughout the discussion. There is not a scheduled break, but we will suggest one about halfway through the discussions. Study sessions are open to the public for observation only. Organizations will not have the opportunity to comment. Please keep your cameras off and yourselves muted. Study sessions are recorded. Recordings will be available within two business days on the Adams County Cultural Council website. Alright. With that, we will move on to our agenda and our first organization is the Platte Valley Players and they are requesting GOS in two projects. So with that, I'll open up the discussion. So hearing that, I guess I'll just kind of jump in here for a minute. In the EDIA, I just wanted to mention that I really thought it was great to see that they are having training for their staff and volunteers on topics like unconscious bias and also cultural competency and that type of thing. So I really think that's a great offering for them to do that. Also, I just had a comment more of a wondering than anything else is on their second project. They have almost double the attendees, but I believe it's in the same location and I was just kind of wondering why that was. I mean, if this is a larger, more well attended, I don't know. Anyway, I do just kind of like, why was it doubled? I mean, it literally was doubled.
Yeah, I can speak to that a little bit because I noticed that it's a musical.
Ah, okay.
In my past life, I did a lot of musicals. They're always, I was actually going to comment that I was really happy to see that they that they had a larger budget for the second project because musicals are traditionally a lot more expensive. The rights are more expensive. Takes orchestras, more actors, more specialized performers. So kudos to them, I think, for for actually acknowledging that some things cost more.
And they do.
And they bring, and they, conversely, they bring in, they bring in, they typically bring in more people and they typically make or they, you know, you gotta spend money to make money.
No, 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 you're good. You know, I, I'm sorry I cut you off. So I did put down that it was a musical, but I just didn't register to me for me that it would, you know, all the things that you elaborated on. So, thank you. Anyone else?
Yeah. Sorry about that. It was interesting talking about GOS in terms of storage costs. I thought that was interesting. I mean, I don't think there's anything wrong with that at all. It was, it was interesting to me and the idea that they're, they're potentially making additional revenue. We're always talking about additional revenue streams. They're like, storage helps us rent things to other companies. So I thought that was kind of interesting and enlightening. And, and the fact that in project one, they mentioned they're the only nonprofit community theater in Brighton. And that's pretty, that's pretty neat. I think that's something really, really nice to help celebrate. In terms of some of the things, I also, I pinged the DEIA stuff, which I think is great. There, the contributors and contributed revenue don't match. Again, that's just me. You all know, that's kind of my thing. I'm always curious about why those, why those figures don't, when they list the contributors, right? And then there's an amount and then right below that in their fiscal data, there's earned revenue, contributed revenue. I'm always curious why some match, some don't. I guess that's the end of the world, but it would be nice if they did. And I like that they addressed their deficit, increased production costs, invest in rebranding. You know, they're working on expanded fundraising, broader donor base, new grants. So they were able to address their deficit. So, thank you.
Yes. I think I saw Emily's hand. I'm not sure.
Yeah, sure. You guys covered a lot of the same comments that I had, but I just, you know, I thought it was a thoughtful application, kind of start to finish. You can really tell that they they're, they're thinking holistically from top to bottom about their organization, how, how they're thinking about funding and all, you know, how they're engaging with patrons and participants and, you know, everything was very thoughtful. So I really appreciated that. Good project descriptions. I would have been interested to know maybe what they're considering for their dramas and in the musical, just as additional color for for both projects. But nice to see the balance between the drama and the musical for, for both of those offerings. So, thank you very much.
Dana, you had your hand raised for a minute. Do you have a comment?
Well, I did, but then I lowered it, but I guess to Erin's point, I'm not sure exactly what was the case for Platte Valley Players, but on occasion, we'll notice that the two numbers don't match. And that is be possibly because, I'm not saying it's because, but possibly because when we ask organizations to list their donors, we ask them to list the ones that, that have a significant donation. So for example, if they have 10 donors, nine of them donate $1,000, the last one donates $50, then that wouldn't be considered significant to that organization. So it may not fall into that attachment for donors, but I don't know why it wouldn't fall into the upper chart versus the lower chart. I don't know if any of you all followed that, but on occasion, we'll see that they don't match because they're not including the donors that doesn't have a significant contribution. I hope that makes sense, but that could possibly be a reason.
Thanks Dana. Anyone else? Alright, we'll move on the agenda then to Words to Power. And I will open up the discussion for that organization. So let me just start this off. First of all, it's a new organization to Adams County, first year eligible. And reading the grant, I really like what they do in Denver. I mean, they do a lot of wonderful things down there. But, and they're asking for GOS and so I just want to just maybe voice a concern that I picked up on. They are requesting GOS from Denver as well as Adams County and they really haven't had anything, any, any programs or anything in Adams County. I think maybe there was maybe 1%. They went to Thornton High School. But I'm very concerned about providing GOS to such a small percentage of activity in Adams County. So I just want to open that up and see what everybody else feels about that. And also maybe, yeah, so just what does any pardon me?
Sorry Joyce, I didn't mean to interrupt. Jim has some thoughts.
Yes.
Well, I will echo that because it, somewhere it says that they, they have done no programs in Adams County for the last five years. And they're new to Adams County and Dana, with all apologies, I'm going to plunge into this. Where in Adams County are they? And I, I share your concern Joyce. They want GOS funding, but they're not going to do anything here. And they haven't done anything here. I don't know where they are or where they came from. And I've started looking for where are these places located? And it is my bias and I've exchanged some emails with Dana, but I will bring this up for real discussion among us in September, but it doesn't seem to me all that inappropriate for us to ask where the headquarters is, where the business is located and, and have that stated very clearly. I shouldn't have to go looking through attached documents to find out where they are and so, yeah, I've got some, some questions. It's a, obviously it's a good program, but
Can I just hop in Jim?
Go ahead Dana. Is it Dana?
Yeah, it's Dana. So this organization, yes, it is new to SCFD. They became eligible this fall. When they applied for eligibility, they were located in Denver proper. Now they are located, and I did check, they are located in unincorporated Adams. So it's a Denver address, but it's Adams County. I did confirm this with Colorado Secretary of State, so the organization did make necessary changes in a legal sense with their filing. However, where was I going with this? However, per Adams County guidelines, and I'm happy that you all are having this discussion, but per your guidelines, as long as organization has a physical address in Adams County, they are eligible to apply for GOS. And so I think that is the case for this organization, but that's just a very factual based. And so I open it up to your discussion.
Thanks Dana. Hand is raised and I'm going to go ahead and say that my hand will also be raised on this topic. So I
Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, roses and thorns, everything you guys talked about. Fantastic program. Love it. Love the use of the book release event. I think their, their budget's incredible. I think it's a really well-written grant application. They do have a massive surplus. I think this gets to my thoughts on this, which is great. Nonprofit does not mean no profit. I think that is great. I would love to see some plans potentially on how there may be increasing staff. I'm not seeing, I mean, it sounds like they've got a rock'em sock'em robot, amazing executive director who's doing all this stuff. And here's my reason for why you might need more staff, this organization. It would be great if you were programming in the county that you're asking for GOS funds. So just to like, give y'all constructive, constructive feedback. One of the, one of the questions, one of our five scoring metrics is operations and strategy, and then a second is impact on county residents. And I am seeing next to no impact for county residents. So scoring very highly on everything else, awesome, but just know, at least that's the way I'm viewing it for the rest of the council. That's the way I view it is their impact is incredibly low on Adams County. So it'd be great to see more programming and and I'll let the SCFD mathematician sort of work out the, but that, that's how I'm responding to that Jim and Joyce. That's all.
Yeah, I would, I would just say thank you for that Erin, because one of my points is we score now for GOS. So the fact that you do score gives an opportunity to make that a communication. So it will, obviously it's still a formula, so it will still be based on their earned revenue, but your score will really move that throttle. So I highly recommend thinking about that carefully. And then I also would just recommend that we add this to the retreat to discuss. I think there are some, some things that come to mind with a little bit of a, of an and clause where it's you not only have to have an address here, but you actually have to serve the county in some capacity and you, you know, we can look at all kinds of, of different numbers or ways to set that threshold. So Larry, you had your hand and then Dana.
Yeah, just very quickly, I wanted to just echo Erin's take on this particular organization. I thought there was an extremely well-written application and roses and thorns. I I was, I was completely behind all of the, all of the aspects of the application. And when I came to the, to the Adams County part, then I was a little hesitant. But, you know, it's not, I guess it's not a perfect application, but, but it's, it's, it's a good one. I think that the, the programming, the things that they have, the way that they, they approach everything is I think those things far outweigh the, the trouble that they might be engendering. Not that there's that much.
Thank you. See, was there someone else?
I just had one quick clarification, which is on their activity sheet, they have four counties labeled for one park and I think the intent was where those residents came from rather than the location of the actual county. It's on 621 2024 La Raza Park. It says Denver Adams Arapahoe and Jefferson. There's the one activity for the day and then different numbers behind it. And my assumption, based on how it was presented, is that he the ED presented where the residents came from more so than where the actual activity happened. So I just wanted to point that out. So the table, in other words, the table, the activities table might be slightly skewed because of the way it was reported.
Right. And La Raza is in northeast Denver, if I recall.
Correct. It's in Denver.
Northwest, but yeah.
So again, for, for my money, and this is just Erin Vega speaking, for, for my money, I'd love to see them expand programming. They've got a nice beautiful cushion. Please expand your amazing programming to Adams County. That's all.
Absolutely. Anyone else?
Yeah, just to beat a dead horse really here, you know, there, you can see what they're proposing in the other counties and they've got that wonderful hour, our words are powerful projects. So just, I mean, copy and paste and maybe it does say to Adams, or sorry to Erin's credit, you know, if you need more staff to roll out more programming, you've, you've potentially got the funding to do that. So an easy way to, to break into the county that you're officeing within.
Carrie, you have your hand?
Yeah, so I, I really appreciated their data and giving us hard numbers. I thought that was, that was really impactful and the quotes from people that have been impacted by this project. It's, it's amazing. And I may have missed this, but with the distribution of the books that these kids participate in, are they charging for the books? Are they given out? I missed that. I couldn't find it. Did anyone else?
I think it says they're given, if they participate, they're given a book.
But then are books just distributed to those who participate or are they distributed to the general public? Is the general public charged? If so, do the kids get a percentage of that income that comes from that? I'm just curious more about the breakdown of what's done with the work that these, these children create, I guess. I would have liked to see that a little bit more spelled out.
I'm seeing community book release event, youth contributors to the book receive $50 to perform at the summer book release event, along with three copies of the book and a themed t-shirt.
I, I saw that, but then the rest of the books, are people charged and do they, it sounds like they don't get any percentage of what's made from those charges or are the books handed out? I, I couldn't find that anywhere. Unless it's just going to the, the participants. Was anyone else able to find any more? Yeah, I, I would have liked a little more detail on, on that is all.
Right, thank you. Anyone else? So I'll just echo what everyone has said. We would love more programming in Adams County. I think there's a lot of wonderful, I mean, I was, really got excited about the entire process and the programming that they did, you know, and was hoping that I would see see more of that in the future for sure. So with that, unless anyone has any other comments and then, oh, and Zo- Zoe, so would, can we put that on the retreat agenda to discuss GOS and multiple applications, you know, so do we want, so anyway, we can have that discussion in September?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Alright, next is Adams County Historic Society. And I'll just open up the discussion. So seeing no one, this is my day, I guess, to do this, but again, you know, they have been and providing services in Adams County for years and everyone just loves to go there and, and enjoy all the things that they have to offer. But there's just a couple concerns that I have that I just kind of noted. One of the things in the application, we kind of looked for, you know, who's on the board and how many volunteers and that type of thing. And I only saw two names in that particular part of the application. So I'm a little concerned about that. And also my favorite thing is, and I could be really wrong about this, so please anybody jump in if, if I am wrong. But in project one, I thought I saw three standalone projects in the one project. Now I could be, it's my reading, but I noted that. So just for everybody to take a look at. And then I think the most concerning thing that I see in project two is that particular project is not eligible for funding. And I think for me, even more concerning is they actually applied for the exact same project last year. And it was deemed not eligible and then they brought it back this year. So I'm extremely concerned about that. So I'll just kind of open it up for the rest of you guys to.
Yeah, Joyce, this is Erin. I'm going to jump in on there. I started getting a little suspicious when I saw only 2023 language. So I didn't see 2024 collaborations. I didn't see. So it felt, it felt a little like a wash, rinse, repeat application, which is a shame. I'm noticing a 97% reliance on SCFD, which is which is a lot. It also doesn't quite jive with their financial overview. So maybe some clarification on, on that could be good. I'm seeing 43 months of surplus and again, I didn't see any staff.
Right.
So yep, that's something that I'm, that I'm clocking. They could also be investing in other revenue sources if they have $40,000 in surplus, just as an idea, a thought for them. I'm also not seeing if anything is added to the collection. So if they do decide to rewrite this grant or take a look at it for next season, do they add to the collection or does it, is it just, has it been the same for years and years and years? And if so, why? But again, they've got, they've got a large surplus, it looks like. It could be a way for them to track additional visitors. It could be the way, it could be a way for them to attract potential corporate sponsors, all that sorts of, for their events. I'm just going down the list, sorry. Yeah, I don't know who the salaries are going to. They list salaries in project one. Do they partner with anybody for the decorations? They talk about decorations. I just, I just wanted more information. It looked like the ask. Yeah. And then the second project, major, major questions. I'm also, just as somebody who runs a venue, I'm seeing $9,000 in admin for what looks like a POS system, a purchase system, like a, you know, someplace for people to check out. And in my experience, that's typically free with most companies. They're asking for $10,000 in, in in professional services. I'm strongly suggesting they look at different vendors. But anyway, that's just, that's just a thought on how they might be able to trim that down, but it also, I don't think is valid for a grant through SCFD. So lots of questions on this one. I would strongly advise them to take a look for next year and rewrite this.
Thank you. I'm going to ask this question to Dana. Dana, since that project two was not eligible in last year, you know, and I'm sure you reached out to them, told them that or, you know, so do, would you be doing that again this year? Or how would that, how would you handle that? Or are we just going to score it appropriately?
I can, I can send an email to the organization when I'm back in the office on Monday. I'll just find the one from last year. But to your point, it's, it's not an eligible request because it's, it's a capital campaign. It's not programming. It's just asking for funding to fund a tracking system. So, right. So I can, I'll write myself a note to send them an email.
So should, how do we score this? Zero.
Zero, yes.
Okay. Alright, just, just want to make it clear for everyone so they know. So, anyone else? Alright.
Wait, sorry, Carrie has her hand up.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
It's okay, sorry. I should just talk and stop raising my hands. I really appreciate that they offer bilingual tours and I thought some of their offerings were interesting and very creative. I did walk away from this with wanting a lot more clarification. They mention in their EDIA section interns, but then don't explain any of that. I'd like to know more about what that internship kind of involves. It's kind of mentioned in a, in a
Um it's kind of mentioned in a in a like offhanded manner. Um I would I would like to know more about that. Um and that section in general could use a little bit more information, at least for me. But yeah, the that really kind of that there were a lot of sections that I think could use a little bit more explanation and a little bit more um detail.
Thank you. Anyone else? Hearing none. Our next organization is Augustana Arts and they are let's see, what are the uh asking for two projects and I think G O S, but I'm not sure. I, yeah, okay. So I'll open up the conversation. Nothing? Let's see. So let's see here. I've got some notes. I'm just going through.
Sorry, Joyce, I will have comments. I just was struggling to get system to work. So you go first.
No, you go first. I'm still reading the.
I'm still organizing, so.
Oh, okay. Anyone else?
I'm digging through my notes. Um I like that they're taking art to the people. I think that's a fantastic uh way, especially when we we are talking about D E I A and all of that, these folks that are able to, these organizations that are able to taking art into the schools and growing those programs. Um I'm loving the pay what you can ticket initiative. Not it. I fully acknowledge that not everything can be free, especially in today's economy. So um pay what you can, I think, is a really, really interesting uh thing that seems to be working for them. Um I like that they they're mentioning their new executive director, that they're coming out, you know, that they're making all of these moves uh that they're upfront and honest. I think the word was stalled after the pandemic. Um so I think that's it's it's nice and refreshing just to see seeing an organization be super upfront about that and explain why. That they have adopted a D E I A policy and um yeah, I think there's a a lot of a lot of great stuff in here.
Yeah.
I would echo that and maybe just, you know, overall, the the application I thought was thoughtful and thorough and well laid out. Um this is one we've seen year over year. Um you know, there are some financial concerns and I think that, you know, with the new E D that they're working to address those and I commend them um for that. Um y- you know, it does seem like they've got some, you know, plans in place to rectify that going forward, which I I certainly appreciate. Yeah, a a great application. Love seeing all of the collaborations and partnerships that they have with other both S C F D and non-S C F D organizations in the metro area. You know, there you can see they're they're applying for support in a number of counties, which is wonderful to see them spreading out all of their offerings um across the metro area.
Anyone else? And just looking at my notes, I I would echo what everyone else has said. I pretty much covered what I had written down here. So anyone else have anything to say? No? Okay, so next on the agenda is the word, A Storytelling Sanctuary Incorporated. So I'll open it up to the group. So I guess I'll start. Um it's a new organization in the uh newly eligible in Adams County. Uh I think that's um in again, they do a lot of interesting things. Uh but I have a few concerns. They are asking for G O S and two projects. And concerning the new the G O S, because they are a newly eligible um organization again, they are actually located in Denver. There, you know, per the internet, it says the headquarters are in Denver. And yet they're asking for G O S because they have changed their address to Adams County. They're asking for G O S in Denver and in um Adams County. So I really, really want to address um the multiple G O S requests that we're gonna be having. And then um for project two. And this is this is a major concern for me, guys. Um this is the application where they have not had any activity in Adams County for over five years, I would say. No programming. It's all been in Denver, which is fine. I mean, they do a lot of wonderful things in Denver, but nothing has really been here in Adams County. And yet um the request is is a huge request. And when I penciled it would for the request, we are only going to be serving thirty-three kiddos. So I just kind of want to open that up. Um they they say three hundred attendees, eleven percent last year was from Adams County, which was thirty-three. So and they're asking for a substantial amount of money for this particular project. So um I have a lot of concerns about that. And also project one, um so I'll just open it up to everybody else.
Yep. Yep. Uh this will be fun to talk about uh in September, uh which is great. So again, just to these, if if someone from this organization is listening, one of our five criteria is impact on county residents. I appreciate them giving us statistics so we can do the math. But you know, it's not, it's it's interesting. If if you're asking for G O S and you're asking for project grants from Adams County, just know we're looking. We we tend to be looking pretty closely at that. If anybody joined us last year, they probably heard very similar sentiments. So again, I think it's a a cool program. Um I, you know, congratulations on on receiving the twenty twenty-two mayor, Denver Mayor's Award for Excellence. That's a really great thing. Um I would love some newer metrics. Uh we've got twenty twenty-two information. You've got a great diverse contributors list, which is great. Um but I'm just not seeing effect on Adams County residents.
So, you know, and I'll I'll just maybe I'll I'll throw out. I know we score by rubric. I mean, and you know, and definitely we should, but I will, I'll just tell you kind of what I've been thinking. Should we even be? Should we be considering even funding this organization this year? I mean, I I guess I'll just throw that out. Uh because I'm really kind of in a turmoil. I I've had a lot of conversations with Dana about this. I mean, she probably, when she saw my name pop up on the phone, probably wanted to just quit. You know, I will say that. Um you know, and it's not, the organization does great work in Denver. I mean, I and I would like to see more of what they want to do project wise here in in Adams County. Um but it just seems like we really haven't heard from them until we changed our guidelines last year. And actually, the address change was in February and uh they submitted the grant like two weeks later. So for me, I'm I'm really struggling with this.
Man, I feel like that's on us, Joyce. I mean, I feel like the guidelines are what the guidelines are this year. You know, it's not their, it's not their fault. It's a it's a tough funding market out there. Um you know, they're doing what they can. I I I I was honestly thinking, Jim, um based on the last application, I'm like, I just couldn't find them. I I couldn't find where they were. So it's nice to know they actually are in Adams County. I mean, I'm I'm leading with best intent, uh or I'm assuming best intent. Yeah, but I I mean, we made the rule.
Right. Well, and I'll just, you know, just for openness for everyone. Because I was always so concerned about this organization, I did a little field trip. And I found them. But it's really not a a brick and mortar or anybody's home. It's a mailbox.
Just wanna clarify one small thing. We didn't change our guidelines. That's not the thing that changed. That that um registered with the Secretary of State, just have a mailing address in Adams County. It's been like that for many, many years, as far as I know, certainly since I started. What we changed last year was actually to also, it was an or caveat to say if you serve Adams County fifty-one percent. So that wasn't a change. I just think that the word might be getting out. And that wasn't like a pun. Um
Yeah, we look at that to Joyce's point. If it's just a mailbox or a P O box and they don't actually host their staff in Adams County, something, I mean, we might want to look at language, but I know that's that's for.
Yeah. September, it was just you know, I I just wish that it was different, you know, that's all. Yeah. Yes, Jim.
Well, in in defense of just the mailbox. I can s- envision a scenario where that would work. Because I am part of a nonprofit in in Arapahoe County. Our business address is the treasurer's home because we're all volunteers and we do our programming in the in the schools. We have a, we use a place to meet once a month in the schools. So we don't have anything other than whichever volunteer is stepping forward and doing it. And I don't know, I confess, I didn't really delve into staffing. But I can I can understand that. But I think we ought to know where that is and I I go back to, I I think it's easy for them to provide for us and moving forward, we really need to do that. And if that's the case, uh they need to explain that to us. That needs to be made clear to the council that this is how we are, how we operate. Sorry. And that's how we work. I understand it because I'm part of it. But this is a from the size of a pretty sizable operation. So a lot of questions.
Yeah, they have three full-time staff and a contractor.
Right.
Yeah, are they all work? Well, they all may all be working remotely. I don't know.
Yeah.
Uh you should tell me that.
Right. Well, you know, and just not to beat a dead horse, but just to as I guess I'm trying to support my own processing here. Um but I'm a chair of a nonprofit in Adams County. And we use a a site other than a brick and mortar. You know, we don't have a brick and mortar. But all the information and the addresses and phone numbers come to my house. So we have a brick and mortar in Adams County. You know, so um it and and that's either ne- neither way, you know, but I'm just saying, you know, so it can ha- be handled in it in a different way than what they're handling it, I think. So that's just my thought. I mean, I've I've been struggling with with this grant for a bit. Anyone else?
Can I just ask, and maybe it's just Thursday after a long week and maybe I'm just not really remembering how this works, but they're a able to apply for G O S in multiple counties because of the way that our rules are worded. How does that? How does that work? Zoe or Dana? You just help me understand that a little bit better tonight.
I can address that, Emily. Um so every county is responsible for creating their guidelines and reevaluating them every year. So there are um and I'm using this word loosely, but loopholes on organizations applying for G O S in multiple counties. Um and so they are correct in the fact that they're following the guidelines um in order, but there are ways organizations can apply for general operating in several different counties depending on what those county guidelines are. And so, yeah.
Just want to add to that though, because it's not it's not because of the way Adams County's guidelines are worded. That's not the reason. There's nothing unless Adams County wanted to say, we will only fund G O S to an organization that receives G O S only in Adams County. I mean, that that needs to come, in my opinion, from S C F D. S C F D would be the one to say you can only get G O S in one county. And it's my understanding that that has come up for S C F D. Is that right, Dana?
Correct. We are, we will be looking at that during the Chair Lees on meeting in the summer.
Thank you.
Thanks for bringing that up, Emily.
Well, I felt a little bit silly, honestly, because I'm like, well, great, I've been on here. I should understand this. You know, as it relates to this grant, these these, this makes it hard, right, to score and consider and so yeah.
Difficult.
Yeah.
Yep.
Larry?
I just want to know if everybody can hear me. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, terrific. I'm back.
Yeah. Well, you know, in I think I mean, and we can, why don't we just discuss it in September, who's I I know that we can elaborate on this for hours. Um so if no one else has any other comments, we'll just move on. Yes, Jim.
A quick point of clarification, S C F D is going to discuss this this summer. Is that correct, Dana? And is Eva Henry still Adams County rep on the S C F D board?
She was just appointed.
She is. Um and because the grants, the grant season is already started, we can't go back and retroactively do anything. So we just kind of move forward. So we have a lot on the agenda. And one of the things is um G O S and in multiple counties.
Did that answer you, Jim?
Yes.
All right. Anyone else?
Yeah, again, I would just reiterate, the only thing that we can do now and we being you, not me, is is the scoring.
Yes, that's correct.
I think they have in and I I might be wrong about this, but I think I'm okay with saying this, which is once you do your allocation, I think is within the council's purview to um fund or not fund an organization based on discussion with with compelling reason not to.
Okay. Yeah, now that you say that, I do think that we've had conversation in the past. So we will um we will take all of that into account and then have an opportunity to discuss at the allocation meeting. Because that's when we, yeah, that's when we'll recommend, you know, funding X Y Z. And we usually come with a couple of different uh variations on that. So we will have time for that discussion. That's, I think, on June fifth.
Okay, but in the meantime, excuse me, uh we would individually score this anyway.
That is correct. Yeah, that is correct.
Yes, okay, anyone?
With the caveat, knowing that the organization um applied, as Aaron said, assuming a good intention, um and so they did not um violate any compliance issues with your guidelines.
That's correct. Yes, thanks, Dana. Anyone else? All right. Let's move on then. And our next organization is Rashani. And they are asking for two projects. So I'll open up the discussion. I'm just checking my notes.
Well, at least this one was easy, been pointing out their new space. Well, at least this one was easy, in pointing out their new space and where it would be located. So we can all, you know, take comfort in that. No, I really thought this was a good application. Um, nicely put together, well-written and organized, made it easy to kind of understand, you know, who they are, what they're doing, um, what their future goals are. Um, and, and, you know, I appreciated it from really start to finish.
Yeah.
Oh, I was, oh, I'm sorry.
No, no, go ahead.
I, I was just gonna say, I was unclear about their, the planned venues of their, uh, uh, both of those programs, but, uh, well. Yeah, um, they gave us the addresses, but they didn't state whether or not they were actually in Adams County. So that made me, that made me a little iffy.
Uh, Larry, they don't have to state that they're in Adams County. I mean, that's kind of up, up to us to kind of figure it out. I mean, but that being the case, I knew about their address or their change in headquarters. I looked it up. It's on the correct side. I would have let you know. Um, if I know, you will know. But yeah, organizations aren't required to, to put anywhere in their grant where they're located.
Oh, Jim, go ahead.
Little clarification, I'm with Larry. They listed all the venues where we're gonna be. And it does say that you're supposed to say which county the venue is in.
Yeah.
And they're all north of Colfax. And, and, and they did in fact choose the new headquarters on the north side of Colfax. That was good. But yeah, I mean, and my sense was, this is just, uh, everybody, they knew that the schools, all the sites were in Adams County, so they just listed the, the venues. But it technically does say you're supposed to say which county the venue is in.
It says right here.
Okay, then I misunderstood. I, I misunderstood. I thought you said that you, the organization needed to say where they're located. They're not where they're doing the programming, but where their, their home address is. So sorry.
I mean, I, going back to old, uh, well, there was a legislature once who used to say, it's a good bill, vote for it. It's a good organization with good programs, support it.
All right, anyone else? Alrighty. Um, with that, we will move on the agenda to Inside Orchestra, the orchestra. And they are asking for G O S and I believe two projects. Yes.
I can kick this one off.
Okay.
Yeah, forty years old. I think that's, I think that's amazing. Any arts organization that can last for that long. We've got a few of them and it's, it's pretty neat. I really liked their examples to help us understand the impact. Um, there's the great, the great story about the grandmother attending who used to bring their son. I think that's, that's fantastic. I love the examples of how they're, the examples of how they're adjusting programming based on the data. Um, so they were talking about collabora, they collaborated with a board certified music therapist to, to refine their valuation tools. I thought that was really interesting and innovative. They are, I think I'm seeing that they're over fifty percent relying on S C F D, but then they gave an explanation. We're back on track to exceed our twenty-five revenue goals and realign with a thirty percent S C F D. So again, you know, I'm, I'm not knocking folks for going, especially, I mean, it feels like COVID so far in the rearview mirror, but it's, it's not for a lot of these arts organizations. They're still sort of, and, and the market has completely changed. So I just wanna applaud them on that explanation. I'd love to see a note about, about bringing more programming to Adams. But, but I, I do know this group. And it's a thirty-some piece orchestra. Um, and I, I just know this since I run a venue in Adams County. There aren't a lot of venues in Adams County that can fit a thirty-piece orchestra. I'm, I'm not, I'm seeing Zoe say something.
Comment to myself. I was just, Riverdale Regional Park, we have several venues here, and they have performed here, and I know that that's part of their grant, but we do, for all of those you listening, we have huge venues here and right in the heart of Adams County.
Exactly, and I, and you know, there's a new venue I know of, um, in the cultural art, in the Aurora Cultural Arts District that is just open, that they've already glommed on to Village Exchange Center and Waymire Dome and stuff. So I'm just saying, there aren't a ton of venues for an organization that size, so it's nice to see them. Um, it's nice to see them, uh, doing chamber concerts and other sort of stuff. And the ticket sales seem super low for project two. That's all. Um, those were my thoughts.
Larry?
Yeah, uh, I thought this group was once again, uh, very strong on, uh, E D I A. Uh, they answered both parts of the E D I, E D I A question, uh, very well. And, um, I think that they, um, avoided the mistake that I've seen many, many organizations make when it comes to this question, because, uh, it's a two-part question. It talks about how groups use, uh, E D I A practices, both in their outreach to audiences and communities, and in their own internal hiring practices and contracting, uh, efforts. And this group answered, parsed out both questions very well and, uh, and answered them very strongly. So I just wanted to, uh, give them a thumbs up for that.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Hearing none, we'll move on the agenda to a child's song. So I'll open up the discussion. Anyone wanna start? They are going to be asking for two projects and G O S.
Uh, I'd have to say that, uh, a child's song have a very strong, um, uh, very strong on questions one and two, on their organization and, uh, and their operations and strategy. They were very clear. They were very strong. Makes me wanna go to, uh, makes me wanna go to one of their events. I just thought that they presented themselves very well from, uh, from the outset.
Yeah. Yeah.
This question might be for Dana. Um, in, in project two, it seemed as though the funding would support the purchase of additional instruments for, you know, expanding the programming. Is that allowed as part of a project request, or should that have been funneled into the G O S request, or is that not allowed there either?
They can request up to ten thousand in capital.
That's a good point.
I remember last year, there was something.
Entire project.
I remember something, there was last year about them wanting to buy instruments to then give to the student. Think that was, that was, that was a concern. Um, yeah.
I, I just have a question more than anything else in, um, project one. I'm wondering about the Montessori school. It looks like it's in Broomfield. And so I'm just wondering, um, because they, they're saying that they're anticipating a thousand attendees, uh, for the project. Um, but, and they call out STEM lab for having four hundred and fifty students that'll be attending. But then I don't know if they're including the Broomfield School. I'm not quite sure how to take this. Yeah, or I'm not understanding it correctly.
I wonder if it's one of those Broomfield Schools that's still a part of the, well, no, it's a Montessori school, isn't it?
Yeah, it's a preschool.
So there's, there's, I, I, I noticed also that there is a Montessori school, uh, in Westminster of the same, kind of the Hope Montessori Academy. There's one in Westminster, but, uh, uh, they didn't use that one. They used the Broomfield one.
Yeah.
Now that, now that I'm realizing it's not in a school district, or not particularly a part of a school district, uh, then I wonder why they didn't use the Westminster one instead of the Broomfield one.
Yeah. And I guess I'm just not familiar with community resources, uh, and what they provide. I don't know if it's just a facility that programs are run through. I mean, I, I'm not quite sure, you know, what community resource is, uh, what, and what services they provide and that, you know, so I guess, I guess I was just a little confused about it.
So i- is that, is the Broomfield School not in Adams County? Or is it? Sorry, I was.
Field. It's in Broomfield, actually.
Broomfield is a city and county.
Right.
If you're in the city of Broomfield, you're in Broomfield County. It's like Denver.
Right, I'm just looking because in there, they talk about the STEM lab in North Glen. But then they, yeah, so they're also including, do you think that was just an oversight? So I mean, how do we handle that if they're listing things as Adams County, which but aren't in Adams County?
Right.
That feels like a pretty big oversight, but how is everyone else responding to that?
And well, I'm just a little confused about it, but I was looking at this, at the applications and I, I don't believe they applied to Broomfield for any funding this year. I could be wrong about that right now, but, um, and if they did, it seems like that school should have gone there, you know.
I'm also seeing on project two, um, a pretty giant other request. So I totally understand that other absolutely exists in budgets. Um, especially projects like this, but I'd love a little clarification on that. Yeah, when I'm seeing a twenty-five thousand dollar line item for other, I.
Yeah.
I'm tilting, tilting my head, like, like my.
I totally agree with that, you know, because it makes you wonder what is, you know, in that line item.
It was the same for the first project, um, twenty-seven K in that one, so.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, for a future application.
Yeah.
Um, could I interrupt real quick? Emily, you have a good point. Um, I had to dig in the cobwebs of my brain about the purchase, for the purchase of instruments in a project.
Yeah.
I'm not one hundred percent sure. I need to go do some digging. And so, um, I'm writing that down and I will let the council know. If that, I'm, I'm thinking more that that should be as a G O S and not a project. Um, the projects are for activities and not for instrument buying. Um, that's kind of where I'm at, but I just wanna confirm that before I finalize that. But I, I, I think that is a very good and valid question that you brought up. Sorry to have missed it when you first asked.
No, that's okay. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay, so we are at the halfway point.
Sorry, Joyce, I couldn't get to my button fast enough.
Sorry.
I did just wanna say, I, I, I think the programming is awesome. This, this goes back to, um, so it doesn't just feel like we're um, nitpicking. Um, I think the program is awesome. The fact that they do have certified teachers going into all sorts of situations. I think they listed foster care and, I mean, all, you know, people experiencing great, you know, with trauma and disabilities and foster care. And I mean, it's incredible work. So kudos to them. I mean, it really is ama, it, it really is amazing work. We're just, we're just digging in there because we have sort of limited resources and we wanna make sure that, that we're understanding everything correctly. So those are the roses to the thorns.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, so, um, we are at halfway. Do we wanna take a break or do you wanna move on?
I'm happy to keep going.
Go on. All right, so our next program then, or, or organization is the Sand Creek Regional Greenway Partnership Incorporated. All right, that was, and they are, let's see, um, they're a new organization to Adams County this year. It is wonderful. And they have, even though they're new to, uh, and newly eligible, they have provided seventy-one percent of activities in Adams County anyway. So that is awesome as far as I'm concerned, so, um, I'll just open it up to any comments or questions.
Well, maybe I wasn't reading that clearly, but they have no, they have no programs planned for Adams County. They're asking for a chunk of G O S. And I did some of this reading too late at night, but I, I'm going, well, what sort of programs are they doing or have they done? I, it wasn't clear to me. Maybe I missed it, but, um, I, I'm, I'm fuzzy on this one.
So I can throw out a little bit of information. I've, uh, been aware of this organization for maybe twenty-five years now. Um, I actually, uh, had the opportunity of, of taking a tour when they were developing part of the trailway. But basically, they, um, uh, they are actually clearing the way. They do environmental type programs and they bring in, uh, uh, different people to, uh, educate folks on environmental issues and, you know, like how the frogs are growing over in the trails. And, you know, they, uh, they do all kinds of stuff, um, you know, uh, for the community. It's, it's really, um, a pretty interesting, uh, organization in what they have provided. Uh, they, uh, educate their, uh, they've started edu, in the beginning, it wasn't youth oriented, and now they have brought in youth. Uh, but they actually bring them in from the boys' and girls' clubs and they had, have them help out either for volunteering and or actually educate them on, on different areas of where they're working. You know, in the waterways or in the trails or that type of thing. So I mean, it's pretty awesome what they're doing.
I thought that they were in, they're split, they're split between counties is, was my understanding, that they're sort of half and, half in Adams County, half in Arapahoe.
Yeah, they started, I think, in Arapahoe and then came through, you know, it's supposed to be a continuation.
Yeah, and I looked up again, I, I was like, where are they?
Yeah.
Looked up their offices and they're
Yeah.
right there by King Supers on M L K. And I went, okay, that's great. It's right by the Greenway and the Arsenal and, um, so it does look like they do, yeah, I, maybe their programming is in Denver, but, but a lot of their, a lot of the Greenway, maybe not a lot of the Greenway, but some of the Greenway is in, is in Adams.
Yeah, but looking at the, at the activity sheet from last year, they did seventy-one percent of their activities here in Adams County. So. They do receive GoCo funding. They do receive GoCo funding and I remember that from the past too, but evidently they're still re- receiving that. Um, and it looks like they're expanding. Some of their program material to offer it, uh, in English and in Spanish. With interpretations if, if, if it's needed, so that's great. They offer transportation. To the volunteers, um, because right now I believe they're in an underserved community. Uh, you know, in that particular area, so the transportation and, and some of the other things that they offer to have. The volunteers help and or are part of the program, uh, uh, is very helpful for those folks.
I really appreciated too that they have community ambassadors to help figure out what is needed in the area. I thought that was a really creative approach. Um, I am curious if they've done so much programming here and they've been around for so long. Are they newly S C F D qualified or are they just now applying?
Oh, I know they're newly here, but Dana, you'd have to answer that question, I think.
Are we talking about Sam Creek still? Um, this organization has been around. I think they've actually applied as for S U D fund in the past, um, and had some issues with activities, but they've. They've started to do more, um, educational, science related. Um, rather more so than just environmental cleanup, that kind of thing. Um, so they are. Am I answering the question? They are newly eligible, but they've been around for a while.
Yeah, I was just curious. They've been in Adams County. They've been programming in Adams County. Why are they just now applying? But it sounds like. They're, they're.
They had to do some, some requirements that we suggested in order to become eligible.
Okay, thank you for clarifying.
Hey, anyone else?
Yeah, the, um, I, I, I thought that the fact that their executive committee has a permanent D E I officer. Um, that I, I haven't seen that a lot, um, on these board makeups and that. That was really awesome, I thought. I was like, that's, that's really fantastic to ensure that they're. Doing that work, um, and I loved their explanations. Um, they had a great explanation about the reimbursement grants, why their financials, you know, uh, were looking the way they were, so kudos to them. And, um, great clarification about. They've got, they've got some things not shown in the contributor section due to not having the appropriate category. And that made my heart do a little jump for joy. Um, I just went, oh, that's why it's not matching. That's fantastic. Um, so thank you for the details, details, even though, even though it was just like little sentences. They go a long way to help us.
Anyone else? Okay, we will move on the agenda to the Adams County Arts and Cultural Commission. They are asking for G O S and I think just one, one project. So open up the discussion.
Sorry Joyce, which, which organization?
Uh, what I've got Adams County Arts and Culture Commission.
I can start, um, you know, just a really tremendous application. Easy to read formatting, all of those things that just, you know, after you've been reading one after another, it just really helps to. Orient your, yourself through it. I love the motto. When developing projects, we ask, what have we done? What's missing and where can we bring new voices? So just the, the overarching embeddedness into the county. What they're trying to accomplishment with all of their, you know, programming, um. Just really appreciate what they're doing, um. Happy to, um, see, you know, G O S requests, project one. Would definitely encourage a second project if they can handle. Proposing something at that level.
I, um, as a, as a former worker out there in the, uh, in the government center. I appreciate the, the Taza Coffee Shop, uh, art shows. And, uh, they've done well. In, uh, twenty-three, twenty-four and, uh, I know they'll do it again this time.
I've got a question about other.
Okay.
Is it not on their, on their budget? Is it not for project one? There are go- is it not governmental? You know what I mean? Whereas, I just don't know where the. Dana, uh, help, help me out here or somebody. What does that? What is an example of other? Can, can somebody just give me an example of what other revenue is? Potentially, that's not corporate governmental sponsorships. Individual donations.
Well, individual is actually spelled out, isn't it, Erin?
It is, but that's what I'm saying, like, if it's not one of the other cat, what, what is an example of other revenue?
If they were using funds from an endowment.
Great.
Like the interest off endowment, um, it's just kind of a catchall and I, and to your point, Erin, I did put that. As a topic for staff to discuss, um, to maybe give some guidance to organizations if they put other, what is, what is other?
But that's great. Endowments, I mean, already I'm like, okay, well, that makes sense. If there's endowments or, or, or stocks or something that they've got, okay.
So I was just reading my notes and I guess I. Highlighted the same thing you did, Erin, and, and what I said to, I said, I, I was assuming. That was coming from the general fund, that the, the Adams County was literally, you know. Moving some funds over to support.
I agree with Joyce on that one because there's really nothing that says government and so I, I, I'm guessing that it's a transfer in. Considering this is a government agency, um, that it's just a transfer over. Which wouldn't necessarily fit any of those other categories.
Yep, that makes sense.
Yeah, because it triggered me thinking about that also and then I, you know, just because of my background, I went, I bet that's general funds.
Yeah, and I'm looking at the contributors and they've got, yeah, ninety-two percent of their budget, almost ninety-three percent of their budget is government. Okay, that makes sense.
Okay. Anyone else? Hearing none, we'll move on the agenda to the North Glen Arts and Humanities Foundation and, um.
Chair, could I just interrupt you super quick? Well, tonight, so I need to go off camera, do some self-care, but I'll be back. Hopefully you won't have any questions for me, but I, I just need to do some self-care real quick.
Thank you for letting us know. Thank you. Okay, um, with that is the North Glen Arts and Humanities Foundation. And I do have a conflict, uh, so I will not be evaluating this particular organization. So with that, Erin, you want to handle the. The, this particular evaluation and conversation.
Yeah, you got it. Thanks Joyce.
Sure.
All right, I can kick this off. Um, again, I love these dates. They were formed in nineteen ninety. I love the amount of programming they do in Adams County, um. The youth theater, s- the youth theater, I did have a question about, you know, pay to play. Are there scholarships? I see that it's an, an auditioned program, which is great. Um, you know, you want super high caliber, you know, you want kiddos with a. A bent toward that, if it's that, if that's your, if that's your goal, um. But I didn't see much information about scholarships, whether it's pay to play, that's where stuff, maybe people can offer some insight to that. I did like their explanation of the other in the projected revenue. I'm like a broken record, I'm sorry about that. Um, and I like project two, I like the Black Box Project, um. That's my soapbox is access to affordable space, so, um. Any chance that organizations have underutilized spaces that they can make available to other organizations and reach out into their communities? I think that's fantastic. Anyone else? Everyone are, is diligently reading their notes. Nothing else?
No, not really, I'm sorry.
It was easy. All right, my, my vice duties have been fulfilled, uh. If there's no other comment, then we'll move on to the next group. Thanks Joyce.
You're welcome. Thank you. Um, next on the agenda, we have the Mountain Chamber Music Society. And they are asking for two projects, um. So I'll just open up the, the conversation, uh, or questions.
I'm just opening this up, but I do recall that I have a question, so I might come back off mute with additional feedback later, but. You know, and looking at project one. Joyce, I'll be you here, you know, is this, is this a, is this an example of multiple projects bundled? Together, you know, that we have a second project option, so, you know, could we have split this out into? Two different projects, so something for the organization to consider in, in future years.
Just, just as an aside, um, this organization talked about how they were. Partnered with the Kennedy Center Performing Arts Partners in Education. Program and I guess that'll be going away. Uh, this time around, considering our climate, but, um. I just thought it was an interesting note.
Yeah.
And I, I, I really love this. I think it's a new program, the Storytime Concert Series. Um, just what a, what a, what a clever, creative. Thing, a way to get, way to get, especially the kiddos involved, the next generation, I, it's, it's a really neat program. It seems very thought, very thoughtful in their approach and. Kudos.
Yeah, I, I agree with you, Erin, and I, the only thing I was wondering about and it's more, again, me wondering about it is, um. They returned some funds and I was just wondering if possibly some of them were Adams County, but Dana's not here with us right now, so. It, it's not a, a biggie. I was just kind of curious, but, oh, okay.
What organization are we on?
Um, we are on Mountain Chamber Music Society.
I will check that for you.
Yeah, I was just kind of curious about it and maybe, you know, why did they have to return the, the funds? I mean, there was something about programming, I think, but I wasn't real. Clear, because they were talking about bundling of some projects and, uh, under one umbrella, so I was just kind of curious what happened.
Okay, so they returned funds. To Jefferson, Arapahoe and Adam Counties. Adams County was two-thirds of it because. They were unable to complete the project. And there were some unavoidable obstacles, um, and they do not anticipate these obstacles happening in the future, so they returned. They didn't work, they weren't able to complete the entire project, so they returned those port, that portion of, um. Equal to what they were not able to complete.
So was that, i- i- and you probably can't answer this, but I'm, in my mind, I'm wondering, so is that a partnering issue? And if so, would the, it kind of move into the projects that we're looking at this year? I'm, I'm just, I, I'm just thinking about this now.
Um, let me look at something else.
Okay.
Oh, what's the organization again?
It's Mountain Chamber Music.
Okay, it, it says, um. They were able to do a successful engagement at Westminster Presbyterian Church in May. Of twenty-twenty-three. Remember, this is twenty-twenty-three into twenty-twenty-four. They entered a unique partnership with Westminster Presbyterian at the start of the concert se- season. They did some complimentary tickets for each performance. In agreement with Westminster Presbyterian Church, the tickets. Were for parishioners experiencing economic need and other hardships. They launched. A library concert series in Adams County College Hill Library. Yeah, so. That's what was reported to us in their final grant report.
Thank you, Dana.
I don't know if that was helpful, but hopefully it was.
But evident, I'm, I'm hoping that whatever the problem was, it's solved, you know, and so moving forward into this grant year. It shouldn't be an issue is what I'm just pondering about that.
Hopefully not. I mean, the grant is taken technically in for year twenty-twenty-six.
Right.
And so hopefully they will have resolved that.
Thank you. All right, anyone else?
Yeah, I, I just one last thing. I would love to applaud them for their outreach to Bennett.
Yes. Absolutely.
And, and I would ask for just more clarity when it comes to their financials. I think there's some, I think there's, this goes for a lot of groups. I think this is what we used to call a global note in the theater, if everybody is doing the same thing. Here's a global note or global feedback. If there's anything that, I mean, I would strongly suggest that folks hand their grants to somebody, um. Someone else. Before submitting, just to, just to see if they could clock some of these questions, because if somebody else outside the organization has questions. Um, chances are, we, this, this commission will have questions, so. Um, there are some financial things that just needed a little more clarity, um. We're seeing surpluses and, and I'll pass it off to Larry.
I just have a question. I was wondering if it might be. Feasible to. Have a certain amount over which. Uh, the description has, the description of a, of an item on the men, on the menu, on the, uh. On, on, on the budget, uh, if it would, if it would be helpful to have. A certain amount by which they can't just go other, they have to break it down. As best as possible. But they just can't say other. I mean, would there, is it feasible that there's an amount? That, you know, the S C F D could set to say, you know, after this amount, you have to. You have to, you know, break things down a little more.
Or a text box as opposed to dropdown menu, I mean, I just.
Been telling y'all is that we're going to discuss it at the, at the conclusion during our debrief.
Thank you, Dana. What is discuss it? Thank you, Dana, what does discuss it mean?
It means that I'm gonna bring it up to my colleagues to figure out a way. That organizations can have opportunity to explain what other is, and then it's up to the organizations. To, to use that description box, if they don't, and that goes to grant making or. Grant, um, yeah, grant making, um, but. That's what I've been telling y'all, is that I'm gonna discuss it with the team to see if we can't get some kind of. Information, directions to the organizations to see if we can get. To them to put something in the description box when they have something in other, listed as other.
So Dana, I'm wondering if we could bring this up in the discussion with the chairs and liaisons also. Because if, if we're questioning it, I am more than. I'm sure that.
In that meeting, Joyce, you are more than welcome to bring up anything that you feel was an issue with the grant process. But I will be bringing it up, we typically debrief. Maybe even sooner than what you will do, um, but either way, it will come up, and I, I assure you. Um, that I will make sure that we discuss it to see what the best plan moving forward is, so that we don't have this discussion next year.
Okay, um, yeah, and I think. For clarity, I think Erin was asking for maybe an amount of money, you know, that, you know, or, or, you know, it's something, if it's.
That was Larry, yeah.
Certain amount, you know, to put it in.
I will bring that up, I'll bring that up too, I don't necessarily know that that's. Something that we can do, because, you know, we don't want to stifle organizations based on that amount in other. But I'll bring it up, I'm writing it down.
So Zoe, do me a favor and write, write it down, because I'm gonna forget this, you know, so that when we go to the chairs and liaisons meeting, that we can bring it up. I'll do that. Alright, thank you. Um, anyone else?
I have one quick, probably, uh, I potentially inappropriate, but. When, when they bring their program to the First Presbyterian Church in Westminster, I certainly hope they ask, uh. Reverend Wright to put something out on his bulletin board, so that people walking their dogs by the church. Know that it's coming, and we could go, um, they didn't, I, it hasn't happened in the past, I think it's a good idea in the future. I say that as a dog walker past the church every day.
Now's an opportunity as a member of ACCC to go over there and go, hey, you know, would you do that?
Well, this does, this does go to something that came up last year, Jim, and thanks for bringing it up, um. You know, places of worship offer incredible opportunities, because usually the acoustics are amazing, and there's chairs, and they're very. Friendly toward the arts and all that, which is great, um, there are a lot of folks that do not attend said places of worship, so, um. You know, just in terms of marketing, there is a chance to talk about collaborations and marketing and and all that sort of stuff, and again, I. What I said earlier stands, there aren't a ton of places to. Have classical music in Adams County, so I totally get going to these, these kinds of spots, but, um, especially if they're very welcoming to your organization, but. To Jim's point. It might, if you're not part of the congregation, it might be hard to know what's going on, so. I'm sure they're doing outreach, um, but they might wanna, um, beef that up and explain how they're doing community outreach into the community and welcoming folks that just aren't in that place of. Go attend that place of worship.
Yeah, absolutely, good point, anyone else? Hearing none, we'll move on to the Colorado Chamber Players, and they are, um, asking for. Let's see, what do I have, um? One project. So with that, I'll open up the discussion.
Do we do Metropolitan Chamber or Metropolitan Coral Festival?
Did I, did I jump over that?
Or do I have a, an old agenda?
No, no, you don't, you don't.
Okay, I think that one was missed.
Yeah, thank you so much for that.
Sorry, Joyce.
No, no, I'm glad you did, because I would be. Too many pieces of paper here.
I know, I know, I'm with you, I'm like, ah, too many screens, yeah.
Okay, we're gonna jump back to Metropolitan, uh, Coral Festival, one project. And with that, I will open up the discussion.
I thought this was a, a. Good application, they were once again very strong on EDIA. And, uh. Um, they have an interesting, uh. Interesting program, it seems, coming to the Mapletons, uh, Performing Arts Center, um. I like their style.
I'd love to applaud their individual giving campaign, wowza. Well done, that is, uh, when you're talking about, um, diverse revenue streams. That is the, that's the hard one, um. But it shows that the community is really, to me, it's an indication. That the, that the community in their community has really embraced them and and believes strongly in in their mission vision, so. Yeah.
You know, going back to, I think what Larry was saying, I, I like their style, I, yeah, the approach of allowing amateurs and non, uh, non auditioned. Folks to come in and perform with, uh, the chorale is, I, I just think it's, it's. Uh, very unique, so, yeah.
I really appreciated in the project request, the, um, the detail around their marketing strategy for, um, you know. Pushing out the, the program. In Adams County, and how, you know, how that ties into how they're cultivating. New audiences and, and maybe even future participants in the program, um. Probably ties in nicely to that individual giving campaign strategy that they're, that they're so, so great, um, at already.
Anyone else? And just a, a comment, uh, you know, when I was reading the EDIA area, that they're really making a concerted effort. To have more a diverse representation on their board, so I thought that was something to mention. And I, actually, to go along with that, they've actually created a policy manual. Um, and have developed trainings, uh, to educate their members of the board as well, so. I think they're highly motivated to do this. Anyone else have anything? No? Alright, next, we, we actually will go to Colorado Chamber Players and, uh, open the discussion. We have one project that they're requesting funds for.
Um, I'll, I'll start, I, I just wanna applaud them for, you know, if they're, if you're applying for, there are ways to apply for Adams County projects. Um, even if you're not, you know, I don't know, even if you don't have a big venue, and the fact that they're going to these, you're going to these spaces, you know, they're going to. Children's hospital, patients, they're going to, you know, they're, they're taking the music to, to the folks, and I think that's, um. I think that's fantastic, and I, I wanna applaud them on that, um, these wolf trap workshops. Designed to speak, to reach Spanish speaking, um, kids, immigrants, Latinx musicians. That are integrated into residencies, again, very, I think a very creative and clever way to sort of broaden their programming and. Get the heart of some of those, um, EDIA questions that, that we ask, um. So, so thank, thank you to them for, for looking at their programming and for, for bringing that to. Specifically folks that can't always get out, right, um, at the hospitals and things, I think that was pretty, pretty neat and appreciated.
Anyone else? Alright, with that, we will move on to our. Last organization for this evening, Sessento Baroque Ensemble. And with that, let's see, they're asking money for one, funds for one project. That'll open up discussion.
I, I think this organization has. A very tough job. And they do well with the challenge, um. In all aspects of, of our. Questioning. As, 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 as much as possible, I mean. How do you get somebody interested in Baroque music, first of all? How do you get kids interested? How do you get people who have? You know, may never have been exposed to it, or may have. You know, I, 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 I don't know, it's, it seems like a tough ask, but it seems like they. They do well with their, with their, uh, uh, with their application, and. And their intentions are, are definitely, uh. Commendable.
Well, you know, Larry. The, I, I, I like, I like what they, they do, and I, I really think that you're correct, that it's probably is a tough ask. But I have to say, I was, um, I don't, I don't remember how long ago, it's been maybe twenty years, but it was one of these things where you go. Oh, let's go to this performance, and it was a Baroque, first time ever, we decided to go. So much fun, I mean, it was just great, we loved it. So every time there's something like this around, you know, we, we tend to go, because it's different. And it's just a lot of fun, and I think if they can get the kiddos. And anyone, actually, you know, to, to go one time, they're gonna just get drawn into it, I, that's my personal opinion. But it, it's always been fun for us to.
I think this, this program that they have, the Gopher Baroque, you know, famous composers who died poor, uh. Uh, that, that would interest me, so, so I, I, I would imagine that, uh, uh, you know, they've got some. They've got some good creative. Uh, ideas on how to, how to draw people in, that's. Uh, and I guess that's why they, that's why they can then come back every year and. And people like me are willing to give them funds.
Yeah, and just, you know, try it out sometime, goes, you know, it'll, it, it'll, it. You'll enjoy, it, it'll be something different, it, it's catchy, I mean, the music is really so. Individualized, and I mean, you know, you, you just don't hear it every day, you know, so, um. I don't know, it's just a lot of fun for us, I guess, is what I'm saying, so.
Yeah.
I might try to go to this.
I love Baroque music just because it calms me down, it's so mathematical, I mean, it's what I listen to, to concentrate, um. But I wanted to say the, um, you know, diversified contributors list, well done, um, a- and, and I also liked that. I wrote this note, um, I love this, not everything can be local, so our programs are inherently costly due to the need for Baroque instruments and vocal soloists. Who can perform complex music in Italian, French, or German. We prioritize local talent, but, you know, they, they might need to hire nationally or national, international artists, um. And then going back to. You know, on these applications, I just, I'm really appreciating the organizations that are sort of speaking from their heart. That are providing clarity and coming from where they come from, as opposed to trying to tell us something we wanna hear. Right, like, just be, I, I'm really appreciating them being, you know, them being open and honest and saying, yes, we desperately want. Internet, you know, we want, we want people of all, all ethnicities to love, um, Baroque music, but it is a very. Complex art form, um, and it requires, it requires certain skills, so, um, something that I think could be great is how are they helping develop those skills? Um, I could, I could suggest that to them, um, I know, I know they, you know, they need professional musicians, but. Um, some of their trainings and things, um. I wish I had a few more details in project one, I, I, I understand venues can be tough, though. Um, I, I, but they, they're a little light on the details when it comes to the, to, to venues and things like that, so.
Yeah. Alright, anyone else? Alright, so that was our last organization for this evening.
Joyce, let me repeat, uh, with this venue, hopefully somebody will tell the venue to tell the, the local yokels. Passing by on a regular basis, that this is coming, and we have this opportunity.
Mm-hmm. Absolutely. Alright, anyone else? Guess we're all going to the show, Joyce, so let's all sign up.
But we can't go together, right? We can't have more than three of us, we have to coordinate.
I know, I'd love it.
I will say, Jim, to their credit, they do have twenty-three hundred bucks allocated toward marketing. Um, which is more than other organizations, um, in the marketing budget, so may, maybe that will afford them a poster, that they can.
Alright, with that, thank you so much, is, uh, and this is, you know, I know it's a lot of reading, more to come. So I'll see you next Thursday.
Joyce, Dana has, uh, some comments.
I have my heat read.
I'm sorry, I didn't see you, I'm sorry.
Um, two things, I checked in with my team regarding a child song and the. Um, purchase of instruments in the, in the project. It's better placed in the general operating support request. Um, in programming for the activity actually be part of the actual project. Okay, that's number one. And then number two is, I have. The preliminary numbers for Adams County in terms of the allotted amount for this year.
Ooh, can you share?
I will be sending this out formally, well, I'll be sending it out, but it actually is not finalized until the, the SFD board. Um, approves this, um, at their next board meeting, but I will tell you now that you have. Two million four hundred and sixty-one thousand seven hundred and one dollars and eighty-eight cents. That includes the carryover of one dollar and eighty-two cents, and Zoe, I will send you this. Um, and again, it's two million four hundred and sixty-one thousand seven hundred and one thou, uh, seven hundred and one dollars and eighty cents.
That includes the money returned by the few organizations from last year.
Everything, yes. And. And you have. Two point eight six million in request.
Without GOS.
Without GOS and without me doing, I'm, right now, I'm in the process of trying to, um. I'm trying to, um, do all of the amendment, the amended amounts, put that in, and to see where we kind of shake out, and that's what I'm working on now. Soon as I have, I will send that to, to Joyce and Zoe, I'll send to the council, I'll send to the entire council.
This is just, just to put things in perspective, just, uh, uh, like twenty dollars less than we had. Last year, so we actually went down in funding?
Correct, you went down, well, shucks, let me look, I don't remember what we had last year.
I was just gonna ask that question.
But I can pull it up super quick.
Okay.
Um, Adams County had. Oh, yeah, Zoe, you're kind of right, two. Two million four hundred and eighty-three dollars. I mean, two million four hundred and eighty-three thousand four hundred and forty-two. And I said that this year we're at. Yeah, it's, it's. What, twenty thousand less than last year? Um, however, the requested amount, I think, went up.
Okay.
Yeah, so I will have that for you at some point, um, soon.
All right, well, thank you for sharing, that's good news, at least we know what we're going to be working with, so, all right, thank you, anyone else? All right, with that, we are adjourned, see you next Thursday.
Thanks, everyone, great conversations.
Bye.